Okay. Call a meeting to order, please rise for the pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Good evening, I'd like to welcome everybody to the May 13th meeting of the Rhinebeck Village Board. First item on the agenda is our county legislator, Joel Tyner.
So, the first thing I want to invite you all to is, next Wednesday, just across the way at Town Hall, I'm hosting a free screening of a movie, it's a documentary film called "Under Our Skin." The website is underourskin.com. It's about Lyme disease and tick-borne disease, and May is Lyme Disease Awareness Month. If you missed, at the top of the front page of Saturday's Poughkeepsie Journal, it's still a really big problem that all too often Lyme disease and tick-borne disease is not diagnosed or treated properly, and there's too many games with HMOs and the insurance industry. So, I have 440 people from all over the region signed on to a petition, you can see their names and their comments, saying, you know, New York State should be like Rhode Island and Connecticut, make sure that doctors are protected if they want to fully treat Lyme, and also, if you have health insurance, your health insurance should cover just three or four weeks of antibiotics. Terry Gibson, former trustee on this board, has really picked up the torch on this, he's sponsoring legislation to make sure that the health insurance issues are addressed, a number of other things. Anyway, Jill Auerbach, who's the Chair of the Hudson Valley Lyme Disease Association, she's going to be a speaker, I believe, and that's next Wednesday, May 22nd, 5:30, Rhinebeck Town Hall. And Dr. Stephen Bach, who has an office here in Rhinebeck and Albany, he's one of the few Lyme-literate doctors around, he's going to be speaking as well during the discussion and the Q&amp;A. So, put that on your calendars, you don't want to miss it, next Wednesday, May 22nd, 5:30 PM, across the street, Rhinebeck Town Hall. That's number one. Number two, I just want to invite, if you are a graduating high school senior from Rhinebeck High, or if you know any graduating seniors from Rhinebeck High, I'm doing my 10th Annual Dutchess County Legislature District 11 Essay Contest, it's 500 words or less on what you would do if you were me, and I need that in by June 15th. And I give out $100 prizes, $100 savings bonds, that's joeltiner@earthlink.net, or you can just bring it to the high school main office, send it to the county legislature offices down in Poughkeepsie, that's 500 words or less, what would you do if you were a county legislator? By June 15th, joeltiner@earthlink.net. Poughkeepsie Journal's done a ton of editorials for well-testing legislation when properties change hands, East Fishkill has it, Fishkill has it, Wapanger has it, New Jersey has it, Westchester, Rockland, a number of us are trying to dredge this up again, this spring, this summer, so if you would like to see that passed, please contact me, 876-248-8453, we're trying to build a grassroots swell. The gas station in Rhinebeck, not in the village but in the town, the Getty Gas Station, was found six months after MTBE was banned from being put into our gasoline, the well water at the 99G gas station was found to have 55 parts per billion, that was six months after MTB had been banned. And with all due respect to the DEC, all too often, the groundwater's not fully remediated, it's not cleaned up when these spills happen. Today's Poughkeepsie Journal has a great piece from my colleague Francine Amparo about how we can move towards zero waste. The solid waste management plan for Dutchess County talks about 60% recycling rate by 2021. That's about three times what we have now, if we're going to do that, it might not be the wisest thing to do, to sell off the only recycling infrastructure the county owns, which is what just happened last month. So, we're trying to say, why can't we use the proceeds for that, the $600,000? We tried to get it onto the agenda for this month, it wasn't allowed on the agenda, but use that to help the villages and the cities and the towns and the school districts and the private sector ramp up the recycling. So, just wanted to point that out, we could use your help getting that resolution passed. The jail issue, I'm inviting everybody, no matter how you feel about this issue, it looks like on Tuesday, May 28th, at 5:00 PM, committee of the whole of the county legislature, members of the public unfortunately not allowed to speak at that, but right after that, there's going to be a public safety committee at which members of the public can speak, and I would just remind you that, if you look at Westchester County, if you look at Albany County, if you look at Brooklyn, they're doing things with reentry that are saving tax dollars and addressing jail overcrowding, aside from spending a lot of money on a jail expansion we don't need. Cutting the recidivism rate from 68% to 9% up in Albany County, saving $14 million a year, if you go to pyhit.com, if you look at the ComAlert system of reentry in Brooklyn. And, last but not least, the New York State Public Service Commission website, it looks like they're still accepting public comments to stop the Central Hudson-Fortis deal. More and more folks, Republicans and Democrats, are hopping on board that, it's secretary@dps.ny.gov. And the New York Times also on Saturday had a big front piece, 400 parts per million CO2 in the atmosphere, a lot of different communities, Seattle, San Francisco, Boulder, Colorado, Eugene, Oregon, a lot of different communities are divesting from the fossil fuel industry. Dutchess County has a $100 million account with TD Bank, Toronto Dominion Bank, that's pushing for this tar sands unfortunately to be mined from Canada. So, anyway, questions, comments, concerns, thank you for your patience, I got to run to the Clinton Town Board meeting, I'm at 876-248-8. Hope to see everybody next Wednesday, 5:30, May 22nd, across the hallway, thank you, sir.
Thanks, Joel. Okay, we had a request from our friends and neighbors from Oak Street to speak with us, and before we move into our department reports, I know you people want to stay the entire meeting and be put under other business, right?
You still can stay, though.
Surely I just. We will take this opportunity now to address your concerns. Michael had come in the office yesterday and shared a letter with me, and said that you folks would be here tonight, so you have the floor.
I'll read my letter first. Good evening, everyone, I'm Mike G., I live at 15 Oak Street, lived there for 30 years. This series of information came about a few weeks ago when I was walking to the library and passed Chris Chestney at the funeral home, and he said to me, "It looks like a homeless shelter across the street," and I looked, and it did look like one. So, I said, "Let's get on the agenda," so we got on the agenda, and then I started Googling, and I found a lot of stuff, and I came in here and I read the record on the property for the last 40 years, and I found a lot more stuff, and I'll read my letter because there's more stuff we can get to. "We write to inform you of a series of recently occurring events within the village that demand the immediate attention of our elected public officials. Unbeknownst to both village residents and the public officials, the facility has begun operation that presents multiple public safety risks to both the local residents and businesses. Specifically importantly, with neither prior notice nor subsequent approval, the Dutchess County Department of Mental Hygiene has ceased operations at their 47 West Market Street facility and transferred control of the building to three separate entities, each with very different missions and services than that of the county. It's these different missions and services that present the aforementioned risks. History of 47 Market Street. The building was originally an A&amp;P grocery store that closed in the late 1960s. Three attempts in the early 70s for new businesses were disallowed by the village because they were considered too intrusive to the neighborhood. The precluded businesses were a car repair facility, a machine shop, and electronics factory. On April 17th, 1975, the village planning board granted approval to the County Department of Mental Hygiene for a facility to treat 20 to 25 mentally challenged adults with six to seven employees and parking for 25 cars. While the county facility presented a change to the local environment, they were during that time good neighbors. There was 35 feet of woods for screening, there were flower and vegetable gardens, clients spent a lot of time indoors, fully supervised. 47 West Market Street was a quiet site, there were few incidents, but isolated, and those that did occur presented only the occasional minor inconvenience of the neighbors' quiet enjoyment. In late 1988, approval was granted to renovate the site, soon thereafter additional office space for the employees was constructed. During the approval process for that addition, the village water department received a letter from an architect, Al Cornicini, stating that the site had 60 to 70 clients and a staff of 20. This record indicates the county had increased the use of the facility by 300% without village approval. Even with that increase in services, the traffic generated by the county operation consisted of two loop buses and six county vans ordinarily arriving at 9:00 AM and departing at 2:30. This increase from the previous approval had a minor impact on the neighborhood. Importantly, for the purposes of this letter, there is still no compliance with that 1988 site plan. We list as examples dumpster placement, gazebo in the side yard buffer area, non-existent trees and shrubs, and final paving of the parking lot. These, while not ignorable violations, are by far the least of the problems presented by the changes in operation. 47 West Market Street is now run by private, not-for-profit corporation and is also used as an outpatient substance abuse treatment and rehabilitation center. Beginning in the winter of 2012, neighbors began to notice lacking maintenance at 47 West Market Street. For example, during snowfalls, the sidewalk would remain uncleared in violation of village ordinances. In late summer of 2012, neighbors took notice that more individuals were congregating on the street and sidewalk, generally loitering and smoking, the smell of marijuana sometimes noticeable, and some had been observed holding small pipes, clear indication of drug use. My own personal attempts to learn about the changes of the facility are as follows. In or around July of 2012, I went inside and spoke with the site administrator about one of the clients wandering onto my property and peering into my garage window. He shared my concern and said they would address the situation. He also informed me the facility would be changing soon, I would probably see less people and less problems. On a Friday, in the latter half of 2012, the county mental hygiene department vacated the premises, they transferred, laid off, retired the staff and most of the clients that had been going there, those clients went to other places except for a handful or less. The following Monday, three new not-for-profit 501(c)(3) corporations came into the building, Occupation Inc., Prose Program, it's a very big corporation with lots of subsidiaries and titles, Hudson Valley Mental Health, and Lexington Center for Recovery. These new businesses had no approvals, they gave no announcements. They're having a very dramatic and negative effect on our community. The primary focus of these three new corporations is drug and substance abuse rehabilitation. 47 West Market Street has become a medical facility in the central business district next to a residential neighborhood. The public safety risk presented by 47 West Market Street's new role is obvious and is now used as a drop-off point for those sentenced to diversion treatment under New York's penal law. The previous clients came from area group homes, the new clients are coming from Poughkeepsie and Kingston and are brought in by taxi services throughout the day. There are dozens of taxis arriving and departing between 8:30 and 4:00 PM, and many of them drive on Oak Street and beyond the speed limit. This is unsafe for the children and families who live and or walk on Oak Street. At least six employees park on Oak Street instead of using their parking lot, and this decreases sight lines to the corner of the street. An internet search of the businesses occupying 47 West Market Street reveals the following from their webpages. "The PROS, which stands for Personalized Recovery Oriented Services Program, offers intensive rehabilitation services to assist individuals in attaining specific life roles, reduce the risk of relapse, hospitalization, loss of housing, or involvement with the criminal justice system. Clinical services are available to individuals for psychopharmacology as well as groups with individual therapy. Services are provided to adults with mental illnesses transitioning from jail, prison, or psychiatric hospital, and those who are homeless and living with serious behavioral health needs. Hudson Valley's mental health website lists Rhinebeck as one of five chemical dependency sites having outpatient detox services. Lexington Center is a drug and substance abuse treatment facility. Methadone and buprenorphine are used in the treatment of their outpatient care. Unlike the county mental hygiene department, these new companies have a different approach in how their clients are managed. Now clients receive services when they enter the building voluntarily. If they do not enter the building, no management control or supervision is given to them. The clients can wander, sit listlessly, sleep on the sidewalk, and/or engage in offensive conversations. Without fail, each and every day that the weather allows, clients of the facility will sit, with some even sleeping on the sidewalks of both Market and Oak Street. The risks presented and violations documented demand village officials take immediate action. How does one rehabilitate people with substance abuse problems when no requirements are made for them to be involved in intense therapy? The neighbors near 47 West Market Street question why this place is allowed in a village center business district contiguous with a residential neighborhood. Such facility obviously demands secure policies to ensure the safety of the Rhinebeck residents. It's ironic that this building needed a liquor license, there would be a public hearing formal regulations adhere to. People with substance abuse problems from Dutchess and Ulster County come to Rhinebeck for treatment, and there is no control, no knowledge, and no oversight. We ask this board to investigate, monitor, and return our neighborhood to a place of safety and peace." That's my letter. I also gave you a list today of the 45 people who signed my petition, I've gone around in the last few days, just a list of observations, encounters, incidents, and things that have been going on since these corporations come in here. And I ask you to basically investigate fully and don't be fooled by very warm home webpages. If you go deep into these webpages and see what they're doing, we have basically become a dumping ground for people with substance abuse, and they're not being monitored, they're not being secured, they're not being, no one knows, and they're wandering the streets, and Rhinebeck Daytop and Eastern Rhinebeck, when those people were leaving and burglarizing the homes, they realized, "We can't protect our neighbors and we're going to close." So, I hope you'll do something for us like you did the last time I was here, three years ago, because we have a really nice neighborhood, and this is a problem for all of us, not just me or Oak Street. All right, thank you.
Thanks, Michael. I will state that I did notice a change in clientele, I was totally unaware there was a change in the operation, I was under the assumption the county was still there, and I think we all were, and...
Well, I went to the county's website today, they listed as being one of theirs that they give services to, until you read the fine print, and it says, if you don't see "DCM" in front of it, it's not theirs.
So, the point being is that we've noticed a change in the people that are going to the facility, a couple of people have spoken to me, and at the time, what I said to them was, "If you have an issue with any of these people, you need to call the police department immediately, and we will take action." You know, we've had problems with people that were at the county facility before, and we took the necessary legal action. One gentleman ended up being incarcerated. The point being is that we weren't aware of the change, and I want to thank you for bringing the change to our attention, and what we will do now, from this point, is hand this over to Bob Fennell, the zoning enforcement officer, he will contact the property owner, he will find out what the arrangement is as far as the organizations that are in this facility, because, as you pointed out in your letter, there's been a change of use here, that's in violation of the zoning code. So, we have to go through the legal process, I've talked with Mr. Olson, the village attorney about it, and we will begin the process, and Bob will look into it the way he needs to as far as the zoning aspect goes, and we'll take whatever action that is necessary to correct the problem.
Thank you.
There's another problem, that was a match.
Could you please come to the microphone and state your name? This is all for the public record.
All right, I live at the top of Oak Street.
State your name, please.
Sally Lyon, 33 Oak Street. Anyway, a lot of people that visit and stay at the Beakman Arms and all of the other little units they have, they walk around that block, and it's probably not a good image for Rhinebeck, you know, walking, because they don't just walk in the evening, they walk around that block off and on all day, and it just doesn't present a very good picture of Rhinebeck at this point.
Okay, thank you. Anybody else?
Hi, my name's Kathy Brzee, I live at 18 Oak Street. And a few weeks ago, we have packages delivered from UPS, and sometimes my husband and I are home and sometimes we're not, but one day I did come home and there was a package on the front porch, and I looked at it, and it looked like it had been partially opened, and it was empty, and I really didn't think anything of it at the time until Mike had told me that someone, another neighbor in our neighborhood had had packages rifled with. So, this is another problem, I mean, sometimes these things happen and you don't see these people doing it, so it's like that was just seemed to me like an isolated incident, just something that happened with a package. So, you know, our properties are being invaded, I spend a lot of time in my backyard, so I don't always see what's going on in the front, but I've started keeping all my doors locked even if I'm out in the backyard, but again, sometimes we don't notice that these people are doing things, so I just wanted to make you aware of that also.
Sure.
I mean, obviously, if I do see somebody, I would call the police, but I don't, you don't always know.
Right, and you know, what I will say too is, if you folks have concerns, bring them to us, we're here to help you, you know? Our job, number, I'm sure you've all heard me say it before, the number one responsibility of myself and this board is to protect the safety and the welfare of this community. We made a significant investment to build a police station, you know? We take this very seriously, so if you ever have any problems or concerns, you can reach out to us, do not hesitate to call the police department, that's the first thing you should do, call the police department, because those people are here to serve you, all right? And we will, we'll take whatever action we can take to make this problem go away and be fixed. Go ahead, Sharon.
My husband's being shot. Sharon rushed in, 12 Oak Street. We had someone walk in our backyard the other day, and my husband just happened to be home, thank goodness, and he was saying he had thought he had worked on our house before, and he was obviously under the influence of something, because we've been living there for five years, so I don't know when he thought he worked on this house. That was kind of disturbing. The other thing that's happened is a little vandalism around, you don't notice it for a while. I have a Lumina, and in my Lumina on the front tires and the hubcaps are the Chevy signs, well, those have been removed, and you have to play with it to get it out, it just doesn't fall out of your car, it wasn't like I had work on my tires. One disappeared one week, and one disappeared another week. I work in Poughkeepsie, I work in a gated parking lot, I have a security guard, I know it didn't happen there, and everywhere else I've been, the only place I've ever noticed it, I noticed it at home, so. We're a little nervous, I don't like people laying on the street, taking a nap, of course, as you know, I'm not shy, and I will tell them to go back to where they need to be. I've already talked to the people that run the facility, have told them I'm a county employee and a resident of Oak Street, and that I am sick and tired of watching Medicaid patients coming to the program and then not going to program, and as far as I'm concerned, that's Medicaid fraud. They accept the Medicaid responsibility the minute they get in those taxi cabs, because that's being paid for Medicaid transportation also. So, that's a point I made to that director, and her response is, "I can't force the consumers to come to program." Well, I would like you to supervise the consumers that are under your care, and if not, I consider that Medicaid fraud. Just a point I wanted to make.
Okay.
Thank you.
Jill?
Jill Myers, 27 West Chestnut. I'd just like to reemphasize what Mike said as far as the cabs, I live right on the top of West Chestnut and Oak, and I didn't realize the change, but I did notice the number of cabs speeding, truly wheelies around all day, and I know there was a bit ago when we had police officers, we complained about speeding and not stopping at the stop sign, and we had, you had signs up a little bit, the blinking things, so maybe you can do something like that, and it's pretty much two cab companies, they're all over, it's rough. And I stopped walking by it because of the smoke, because of the gentlemen sitting around, and the filth, and it's really sad what's happened in a short period of time.
Okay. Maureen?
Maureen Gregory, 2 Prospect Street. I just wanted to concur with what was just said, and the speed with which the cabs are driving up West Chestnut Street is really scary, and I wanted to point out to you, if you don't know this, that we now have at least three families with very, very small children in the neighborhood, which is great, and it's great fun, but because we have no sidewalk on West Chestnut Street, people have to walk in the street, and it has become unsafe to do that with the speed at which the cabs are literally, I totally concur, wheelies is, it's, they're flying up and down West Chestnut, and everyone takes West Chestnut to avoid the light, so I just wanted to point that out to you.
Anybody else? Okay, we'll follow through from our end.
Thank you.
As I said, don't hesitate to reach out to us at any time. Thanks for coming in, folks.
Thank you.
For April, wastewater treated, 3.6 million gallons, gallons of sludge processed, 88,440 pounds of sludge processed, 11,300 pounds, cubic yards of sludge processed, 23.1. We expect the shipment of the sludge press to be around May 22nd. The sludge press installation project should commence about two weeks after that. We're going to have temporary wet sludge removal during the construction phase, so Anthony Gasparini's here tonight, and he is getting bids on temporary sludge removal. We are going to, Ira Conklin is going to remove that tank any day now, I don't know if they come out yet, or if they commence the work on that, or, yeah, you can...
Good evening, folks, Anthony Gasparini. I'm happy to report that Ira Conklin started work yesterday, the tank has been removed, appears to be no soil remediation needed at this time. They're following the contract, the excavation's been backfilled properly, they're going to be forming and pouring the slab for the new tank tomorrow. There's been a temporary tank located, a 550-gallon tank, for the use of the emergency generator at this time. So, hopefully, probably about this time next week, the job will be completed. I'm soliciting bids for the hauling of the wet sledges Brent had just previously spoke about. I anticipate, hopefully, the work to start on the sludge press around the first week in June. I haven't heard anything rock-solid, but that's what we're looking at right now.
So, I asked Anthony to come tonight because we got the bid, he got the bids on the lawn mowers, and I think you're all had a chance to...
Yep, I looked them over.
...look at this, we got...
Looks good.
...a bid from Keel, 48-inch deck lawnmower for $4,749, a John Deere, from Reardon Bricks Lawn and Garden, no relation, or?
No relation, no need to recuse.
A club cadet.
Unless they want to share the money with me.
For $4,850. And then we had two different, well, you can go on to detail about Conway's bid.
Conway Lawn and Power submitted two bids to us, actually one bid with two pieces of equipment. The first piece of equipment didn't meet our bid specifications because it was a lighter duty lawn and garden tractor than we really needed, and the last one was bid with a 52-inch mower deck, and that's the smallest in width that's available, and again, that did not meet our bid criteria because we needed a maximum of 48-inch. The other two comparable ones, as Brent spoke about, was the Keel Equipment, which is the John Deere Series X500, which is, I want to point out, is a multi-terrain tractor, it's a 24 horsepower with the 48-inch deck. The club cadet is pretty much comparable, but I believe, besides price, what put the John Deere shifted the weight in terms of selecting that vehicle for the work is because of the inclines we have at the wastewater plant, if you notice, it has a multi-terrain, it actually has a locking differential on the rear wheels, which gives you posi traction when you perform incline work. Also, if you look at the specifications, the tires on the equipment is actually a little bit bigger than the club cadet, and I felt that it was the better application for providing lawn mowing at the wastewater plant.
Make a motion, Brent?
Yeah, I would like to make a motion that we approve the bid from Keel for the John Deere Select Series X500 multi-terrain tractor, $4,749.
Is there a second?
Second.
Discussion? All of us in favor? Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? So voted.
Thank you. Any more questions, or the board has of me?
That's all I have.
Good.
Okay, thank you, gentlemen.
Thanks, Anthony.
Have a good evening.
Thanks, Anthony.
Thanks for coming. Oh, no, I have one more question. The extension for Kyle Moore.
Yes.
Did you, Lisa, did you look into the requirements for that?
He's extended for another 30 days.
Automatically, or we don't have to vote on that?
No, you don't have to. You can automatically extend him.
Okay.
And his last day, I might just point out, with that 30-day extension, it would be June 5, I believe.
If there is, I mean, if you need to extend him again, we call Ditches County Personnel. You have to give them a reason as to why you want to extend them.
Okay.
They may approve it, they might not approve it, but as long as you have a reason.
Okay. Sounds good.
Okay. Thanks again.
Thanks, Anthony. Okay, Water Department, Heinz.
We treated about 11 million and 54,000 gallons this month. We received a bid for pipe and painting of the galley, and painting of selected pipes of the low lift station. The bids came in quite surprisingly. We got four bids. One of them was for roughly about $29,000, and the others were all in the 78,000 to 80,000, $79,000 range. Upon receiving the bids, we called back on the low bidder, and they reiterated that that's what they want the bid to be. And we also went out to ask for references, and we checked the references out, and the references came in all well. So I'd like to make a motion to, oh, by the way, I have added in your, in your, in your package, there should be a bid package in there, how they came in, and a letter from the engineer. But essentially, I want to make a motion to accept a bid for $29,100 by Frank J. Ryan and Sons to paint the pipes in the galley, to paint the galley itself, and to paint selected pipes in the low lift station.
Is there a second?
Yeah.
Any discussion? You drive a hard bargain.
Yeah, well, it was good.
It's quite a discrepancy between the...
Yes, it was. And that's why we...
As I say, he drives a hard bargain.
We went back, we went back to check with the low bidder.
To make sure they didn't make a mistake.
Yeah. Okay.
Water distribution system...
Hang on. We got to vote.
Oh, I thought you did.
No.
We discuss a motion in a second.
Sorry.
Any more discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? So voted. Okay. Go ahead.
The second item is, you told me to hurry up.
Well, you want us to vote, don't you?
Hydrants, the fire hydrants, replaced a, we replaced a fire hydrant on Montgomery Street and West Market Street, right on the corner here. We repaired a broken hydrant in Cul-de-sac and Somers. The South Parsonage Water Main Distributes, Water Main Relocation Project is all completed, and we should be getting the last payment. Thank you, sir. On the other hand, when I was on vacation last week, one quarter of my department retired.
Oh, boy.
So Greg Johnson tended in his resignation to retire on 6/29. He's going to leave at 6/8 here. A couple of other things I'm working...
So everybody understands, his last day at work will be 6/8, but he won't officially retire till 6/29.
I have a couple of other, well, actually, one major initiative going which has to do with reducing the electric power that the village consumes in many of its endeavors. One of them has to do with the streetlights, the other one with changing the suppliers of our power to get better rates, and the third one has to do in the water plant to change the control system for the motors because these motors use a lot of power. I've spoken to that before. What I want to talk to you about today mainly is the discussions I had with Central Hudson, and I'm talking there with the director of large customer. His name is Mark Mulpeter. And we talked about replacing about 115, 116 or so lights, and these are all mercury vapor lights. And they consume about twice as much power as the regular pipes that you see everywhere else, which are sodium-based, high-pressure sodium-based lamps. Now, the savings there, both in terms of the rental cost, because Central Hudson rents almost all of them, with the exception of 14s, we own 14 lamps here, and then the power. And as an example, I ran through, made a model based on February's bill, and just changing these 115, 16 lights would have saved us about $636 just by changing the lights. Central Hudson will replace them free of charge. They will not charge for man, for labor, or for the hardware. And the only thing is, it's gonna, they're gonna do that at night when they replace them, and it said it's going to take a number of hours, a number of months to do that, to replace all of these.
The cost savings, huh? That was for one month?
That was for one month, yeah. Now, this happens to be a month where you have the lights on a lot, okay? But I would, my guess, estimated guess is that we probably save about, on average, $500 a month for 12 months, so that's about $6,000 a year, just for street lighting. Now, what needs to be done here is, I had the last discussion was this morning with them, and Mark wants to know whether this is something we want to do because he has to start a lot of paperwork, and it'll take, he said, six weeks to get the paperwork in place and then get the program started. And he needs a letter from you, Jim, to do that, and I can write it for you and get it to you, okay?
I mean, I don't see any...
So I assume we can, we want to do that. So I came in last night from Minneapolis, and I looked, got into Albany. They all have sodium vapor lights, they're all these orange kind of lights. There's very few mercury lamps.
We could have a heck of a party for $600.
We can have an orange party here.
How do you tell?
Are we distinguished?
I'm sorry. You can, because as you come down, you see it's all, all orange. Everything is orange, except, except the mercury lights, they're kind of whitish, bluish. And they use about twice as much power as the other ones. So the second item I'm working on, and I'm not completely done with this, but I thought I could give you an update, and I'm going to just give you some paper here on that. That has to do...
One other thing.
Yeah.
The idea of the LEDs, that's just not feasible at this time?
Yeah, well, good question. I had talked to, Jim had mentioned that years ago, Central Hudson wanted to have, had a plan in place where they replaced LEDs. They had the pilot project going on in New Windsor and at Bard College. And when I approached Mark Mulpeter again to remind him of that, he said, "Well, I don't remember that." And I said, "Well, I happen to have a flyer here from you," so I scanned, sent it to him, and says, "Oh, yeah, now I remember."
It was their newsletter.
That's right. Now I remember. This was a newsletter that we sent out in 2010, and it turned out that the maintenance cost of these LEDs was exceedingly high. They were supposed to last 15 years, they only lasted two years. Now, LEDs, you get even more savings on power, but apparently that technology is not a viable technology.
Not if you have to continually replace it.
Replace them, okay. So the next item I wanted to talk to you is about the alternative power that I've been working on for a number of months here. And I just wanted to get an, want you to get an update where I stand. Let's see, there's one, two, three, four, and one for you. Essentially, what I have done is I contacted six companies to find out what the rate reduction would be if we were to contract with another power supplier. Now, it turns out, I looked at our, at our bills here, and if you look at the second page, I made a comparison of, we have about 15 or so Central Hudson bills that we get as a village. And I had, and there's the account number, the meter number, the various rates, and the kilowatt-hours that we use in the billing period. Now, some of the billing periods are one months and others are two months, and I normalized that, so it is actually per month. There is a total column, which is the total cost of the electricity plus the distribution charges. With other words, Central Hudson charges you a connection fee, they charge you a fee for using their power lines, and then they charge you for the cost of the electricity itself. And so the total column is the total cost that we paid in February 2013 for these various entities that we get built on. And it happens to be about 13,000, 13,500, $13,600 roughly. Of that, the Central Hudson supply charge was, for one month, was $8,600 roughly. When I went to the various companies to get an idea what we would save in terms of using them as a broker, so to speak, it turned out that the first company was Agua Energy, and they wouldn't even want to talk to me. They want to give me just a one-month teaser rate, and that was it. While I also checked out with the PSC, they have a listing of complaint rates against some of these alternative power suppliers, and they had a fairly low complaint rate. On the other hand, they wouldn't tell me what they can do for me in periods of the year. With other words, I could not compare the Central Hudson rate for years, for a 12-month period versus their rate. So to me, that I don't like. I talked to a company called Alpha Gas and Electric, and they promised me a lot of savings. They said every 12 months, we get a free electric bill. It turns out, they were only in business for eight months at the time, and so...
You're too smart, huh?
But they got also, they had also the highest complaint rating in there. When I talked to them, I felt like a boiler room kind of a thing. Ambit Energy, I called them, they had a medium complaint rating, they never, nobody picked up the phone, and nobody ever called me back. Blue Rock, I had a fellow here from Blue Rock...
Should I be at a high complaint rating?
What was that? Yes, well...
In your mind.
No, my bad. The Blue Rock was here, and they only offered me a 1%, and I said, "Well, this is hardly worth it." And he came down from Waldman, the fellow, and so on. North American Power just offered, they had a medium complaint rating and offered me, they had no history, just an introductory rate, like you get one send-off, you know, the first month and something like that. The one that I really liked was Viridium. They had also one of the lowest complaint ratings, and they had almost two years' worth of data that I could go back and compare to their data with Central Hudson. And the, with them, then I used their data and made that list here that you have, that spreadsheet for the comparison for the February 2013. And that particular month showed almost a 36, a 33% saving in, just on the power, which would have been about $2,500, almost $3,000 on that particular month.
I have a question.
Yeah.
What's the difference between this column and this column?
This is the, this is what our bills were. This is normalized on a monthly basis. With other words, some of them are two months, and some of them are one month. This is a two-month bill, this is a two-month bill, this is a one-month bill. And so I just normalize it one month. So the biggest users, of course, is the water department and the sewer department, as you can see here. But anyway, so we, in that particular month of February 2013, we could have saved 33% of the energy bill. Now, when you go back and then look back over the whole period of years, these are market-determined charges, the electricity. So, you know, we don't have much control over it. Every month, they change a little bit and so on. But if you look over a period of time, in that case, I looked at about 15 or 16 months, it looked like there's still about a 10% to 11% savings every month. Now, it could be that at one month or so, they're higher. As a matter of fact, they had a chart here that shows that one month it spiked up like a half percent or something above Central Hudson. Central Hudson tells me they're buying their power, and they don't add any surcharges for it, but I don't know where they buy their power from. You know, these guys are power brokers, they buy whatever they can get, they get the cheapest line. If we were to decide to take these, this company, there's no additional work involved for us. The billing is going to be the same, the billing comes from Central Hudson, and the bills will be the same. I had sent a copy of their contract to Rich here, and Rich gave me a couple of questions on that, particularly, one of them was, do we want to have a variable rate or a fixed rate? And I certainly would want a variable rate because on a fixed rate, you always pay for the hedging of it because they hedge their price, and you know, you pay for the hedge, okay? And in general, I found in, I like, I like to have a variable thing so I have a control over what it is because we never know. Usually, you win with a variable rate compared to a fixed rate, unless you have to make a, you know, you have a variable income stream, and you've got to be in a certain, you have to have a predictable cost every month. There's a couple of other questions came up from Rich, and at the same time, I sent the contract to Rich, I also sent it to Mark Mulpeter, who again is the director of large customer operations. Central Hudson, by the way, is interested in getting rid of their business, the electricity selling business. They just want to control the pipelines.
They just want to distribute it.
They just want to distribute. And he said he was going to look, wanted to look it over for me. Unfortunately, I sent it to him this, early this morning, and he had some personal issues to take care of, but he's going to get back with it here within a day or two. And then I'm going to talk again to this fellow, the region, to talk about the issues that Rich had and whatever, whatever Mark Mulpeter comes in. So I just wanted to get you up to speed of what, where we are. I think we are within a few, within a week or two of selecting somebody. I don't know exactly what we have to do as a board to change our supplier. Maybe nothing, I don't know.
Well, we're going to sign the contract, so...
Yeah, okay.
You don't need a resolution to do that.
Okay. So we, maybe we can meet sometime if you want to...
If you want to do it, just schedule a special meeting.
Yeah, okay.
We just connect for a few minutes to get that.
As far as the...
Can I ask you a question?
Sure.
One line says the total's $13,599.
Yeah, that is the total...
That's what we actually paid.
That's what we actually paid. That is, that is the distribution and the cost of energy charge plus the connection charges.
This was just for the supply.
Okay, so we're just, we're still going to have distribution charges?
We still have distribution charges, yeah. Now, I'm working on the distribution charges as well, and that is mostly with the water department. Because in the water department, distribution charge has to do with the instantaneous amount of power that we suck in out of the line. Like if we start our 100 horsepower motors, they take 1,100 amps, and the Central Hudson charges you, you know, they check you, you know, by another second, you see? And then they take the highest amperage of the, of the, of the day.
It's the highest demand.
They charge you, they charge you for the whole, for the whole day.
That's why you don't want to turn your air conditioner on the last day of the month. You pay the whole month.
Yeah. So, did I, see the next column says $9,028?
That is the...
That's the supply out of this total?
That is the supply, yeah.
Subtract that, and you get the distribution charges.
Distribution charges, yeah.
Okay.
Yep.
Water plant motor control, which is the third one, which addresses the issue of instantaneous usage of power for a large distance. I've been talking to a number of vendors who build control systems. I have another meeting on Thursday with a local Poughkeepsie operation, and I am actually slowing this down a little bit because I'm in the middle of getting this whole water plant painted on the bottom, and I have to get it painted and cleaned out first before we can think about putting a system in there to control our power searches and so on. So I'll get back with you at a later time. So that's all I have for today.
Fire Department. Keith, what do you got?
All right. I'll start by saying, Jim and I attended a fire commissioner training on Saturday, and that certainly feel more prepared to do this job now. Learned a lot. Next, we'll go into a bunch of numbers here. We missed March last month. So EMS calls... So EMS calls for the town, ten, village twenty-three, for a total of thirty-three. Fire, ten, for the town, seven for the village, and seventeen total. Motor vehicle, three for the town, zero for the village, and three for a total. That would be March totals, a twenty-three for the town, thirty for the village, and fifty-three total calls for March. Onto April, we'd have EMS, twenty-three for the town, twenty-six for the village, with a total of forty-nine. Fire, for the town, seven, village eight, total of fifteen. Motor vehicle, five in the town, zero in the village, and a total of five. That would be monthly totals for April at thirty-five for the town, thirty-four for the village, and sixty-nine total calls. And I was able to tell you a quick total, year-to-date, calendar year-to-date, one-hundred-and-thirty-two total calls for the town, one-thirty-three total calls for the village, with a grand total of two-hundred-and-sixty-five calls year-to-date. Do not have a percentage as compared to last year, as of yet. Next, we got some personnel changes for recently. We have two new members elected by the fire department that would first be Saul Freeman as a probationary firefighter, and Matthew Miller as a firefighter. Like to make a motion to approve the membership of both mentioned members.
Is there a second?
Second.
Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Oppose? So voted.
We also received the resignation of the fire chief, Eric Dorr, recently. And then on Friday night, the fire department met and elected a new chief, which would be Kevin Asher, that will leave the first assistant chief position vacant at the time, which will likely be decided at the June meeting. So I'd like to make a motion to approve Kevin Asher as the chief of the Reinbeck Fire Department.
Is there a second?
Second.
Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Oppose? So voted. Thank you, Kevin, for being willing to take the job on. Congratulations.
Thank you very much.
Congratulations, Kevin.
Thanks.
That's summing up for the fire department.
That's it. Kevin, you got anything you want to share with us?
No, if you have any questions, I was here to answer, other than that. We had a good month, sixty-nine calls, and we're still in good shape, so...
Okay, well, zero calls would be a real good month.
Well, that'd be a good one. Try to keep down a bit.
Yeah. Okay, thanks. All right, street department. Howie?
The street department has been mowing and cleaning the parks and spreading the mulch. They're picking up the brush and debris, and once again, Mike would like me to say that they don't take the grass, because DEC regulates what they take, can take, and grass is not permitted, I assume, because of, might have some pesticides in it, chemicals in it. So please don't put grass out. And Mike is also asking me not to put the mulch near the storm drains, as he takes a lot of pictures of mulch being piled right next to the storm drains, and obviously, it gets washed into the, to the storm drain system. We spent a lot of money last year cleaning them out, so if you could please put your brush, leave it on your lawn, that's the best place to put it. Catch basins are being repaired, with the worst ones being done first. Mike met with blacktop contractors for the bids, were planning to pave South Parsonage Street. They got a couple bids, I don't know if you wanted to, we need to get another one, right?
The only thing I've really seen is from Stat, right?
Yeah, another one came in.
That's AC Smith.
I haven't seen that one.
Okay, well...
He said he was reaching out to Colaruso and somebody else, too.
Mm-hmm.
So...
Do we need, can we do this with just an RFPs, or do we need to do the close bidding process?
Well, the problem we've had here is that we received a bid from Stat, and it was well above the thirty-five thousand dollar limit, but they included the price of the blacktop with it. And my question is, is how the specifications are being sent to the contractors that we're discussing this with? Because there shouldn't be confusion, and everybody should be bidding the job to the same spec, as to the length of the road, and the number of driveways that have to be blended, and to the width of the road, storm drains that have to be addressed, those types of things. So we need to get together with Mike, and we need to talk about specifications with him, and make sure every contractor gets the same spec, so that when it comes to the table, we're comparing apples to apples. Now, we have the ability, Rich, do we have the ability to separate the purchase of the blacktop out from the paving contract?
I have a little...
So we can't buy it under state bid ourselves, and then have them do the labor?
I gotta look at it and take...
All right. Let me know on that.
Yeah.
All right. And what we should do is, if we have to go out to bid, we have to advertise for bid. What I, originally, what we asked Mike to do was draw the spec and get a cost estimate, so we knew how much we were facing, so we could figure out whether we had to go out to bid on it. So it seems quite obvious, we're going to have to go out to bid.
You would want to ask the engineer to write the specs for it?
No, we don't need it.
Okay. To be continued, then.
No, I can understand it. You want, we can sit down and I'll explain it to you.
And we appreciate the extra work you're doing on this, too.
Who, me?
Yeah, because it keeps going on.
Yeah, we want to get something done this year.
Yeah, and the thing is, we've got to try and get this together, so if we can get this thing done. We want to do this project while schools closed, and it's got to happen between the end of the third weekend, June, and the beginning of September.
Right, right.
You know?
Okay. Mulch sales are very high, and everyone seems to like our mulch. We still have more, but it's going fast. It's twenty dollars a yard.
I didn't say I liked your mulch.
Heath, you like our mulch, don't you?
I love it. I got some left over.
Heath purchased some mulch. The equipment is working well, knock on wood. Blacktop repairs are underway. Dish lines for the drainage have been cleaned out. Plants are ordered, and they will be planted in the coming week, that's to beautify the village. Street cleaning will be done on five-twenty-three in the downtown area and for the parade route. It's for Wayne's Parade. You're welcome. That's it for the highway department.
I know I saw a bunch of them over there on the corner by this tree.
Well, I was going to talk about that in the tree, in the tree report, yeah.
You want to do trees now?
Yeah, let's go right to the trees. Everybody had got the minutes from the trees I emailed you? Some main points are, the April planting was very successful, we planted on April twentieth. The village dug the holes pretty well there. Planted, I think, twenty-four trees, give or take a few, don't quote me. We had a lot of help from Daytop, and we had about fifteen local volunteers, about four or five people from Daytop, plus fifteen other people helping us. I'd like to thank everybody. We had one resignation on the tree committee. Cynthia Fennell resigned, due to that she has to take care of out-of-town family business. We have a couple people interested in that vacancy. Actually, we have two vacancies now, with the resignation of Jason Heminek last month, so we have two vacancies on the tree commission, if anybody's interested. The question to me was, do they have to fill an official application?
They should submit a letter of interest to serve on the tree commission, and state whatever qualifications they feel they have to apply. We don't have an official application.
I didn't think we did. Okay. Right before our meeting, about two hours before our meeting, we had two applications for tree removals, and we're still investigating them, but there's one here that is a little controversial, that's the one, this letter that we got, everybody got a copy of that letter? There's one on thirty-eight, here it is right here. Thirty-eight Chestnut Street, it's on the corner of Mulberry and Chestnut Street. And a lot of the residents wrote a letter saying that they do not want to see the tree go, but we are having it analyzed by a couple arborists.
They were there today.
They were there today.
Yeah, I saw Cecily and...
Yeah.
Tree company, and Mike was there, and a bunch of the neighbors were standing around, right around one o'clock. My question is, it says I'm writing in protest to the removal. Have we made the decision to remove the tree?
No, 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 no. Maybe the, she should say pending removal, or possible removal.
How did the tree come to the tree commission's attention? Was it because of this letter, or...
No, no, it was a letter from the homeowner. She turned it into you around, what, three-thirty that same night that we had our tree commission meeting, so we didn't get, we didn't get to look at the tree.
So the village board hasn't even talked about this yet, right?
No, we haven't.
Okay.
The tree commission has not determined yet if it should be taken down, because we have a couple...
I don't know if anybody's been over there.
No.
There's one, there's a big branch on the east side of the tree that got cut off.
Okay.
All right, and there's like a stub there, and then the left side of the tree, the east side of the tree comes out into the street. There are cables up in the top of it, cabling it together to help support it, but the tree looks perfectly healthy to me.
Yeah, there's a few dead branches up there. It's been, tree commission initially recommended that the tree stay and have a professional cut out the dead wood, few the dead wood, and maybe trim the one side, so it's not top-heavy on that one side on going over the road, because the other side's all cut.
It's on the sidewalk, on the median property, it's not on a...
It's in the strip between the sidewalk and the road?
Right.
Yeah. So the homeowner has requested this tree come down?
Yeah, the homeowner's requested it.
Okay.
And apparently, she has a professional...
Because this made it sound like we had already decided to remove it.
Well, the homeowner told this person that it was coming down, so...
Okay.
There's a little controversy going on in there.
Thanks for the clarification.
There's about twelve signatures on here from people in the neighborhood that want to keep the tree.
Okay.
Howie, I have a question. On the north side of East Market Street, there was a lot of work done lately to beautify the wells of the trees by raising, put stone in there, you know, brick, and then now they're putting a piece of metal in there to raise it even further.
Like, where is this?
Right in front of the hardware store.
Hardware store and...
Ariel, you know, where they put the bricks around the tree.
Yeah, well, there's another letter here, did you see the other letter?
To me, this is just going to exacerbate the problem in the long run, because you keep on piling, piling soil on there, and the roots just want to go where the soil is. They're going to, they're going to raise that up. Has the tree commission taken a position on that?
We haven't talked about that, no. But there's another issue here where somebody fell. I don't know if you want to talk about this now, this was going to be in other business, I guess.
Well, a letter like that, the insurance company gets notified. My belief is, you've got to pay attention to where you're walking, you know?
It was at Iris, right?
Yeah, yeah, another location, yeah, somebody tripped on the bricks that were out there.
If you're walking around and not looking where you're going...
Well, we have bricks across the street that go around that tree, and they're actually for safety, because that sidewalk was raised, and it was a tripping hazard, and now you have to watch where you're walking.
Yeah.
Yeah.
But, you know, on the north side, and we're building...
I mean, it's not that the sidewalk's defective, it's that there's a tree well. And if you trip over, whose responsibility is that? Ours?
Well, it's not a tree well, actually, there's stone sticking out, slate sticking out.
Yeah, it's the form of a tree well.
It's a stone tree well.
Yeah.
Well, maybe we better ask Rich. Is the village liable?
Well, I mean, again, if there's any notices that have been filed, you file them with the village, you refer to the insurance company. You don't need to debate it here.
Okay. There's one, one application that we did approve of a, taking down of a tree, David Miller, ninety-three, East Market Street. There's, there's three cherry tree, three cherry trees, say that fast, all in a row.
Three cherry trees, three cherry trees.
And the one, the one in the middle has died, so we recommend that they take the dead cherry tree down, and it's...
Are you making motions on this?
Yeah.
All right.
I make a motion that we take the one cherry tree down at ninety-three East Market Street, on the Mulberry side of the house.
Is there a second?
Second.
Any discussion?
This is going to be done internally, right?
Yeah, it's a small tree that's built, the highway crew can do it.
Good.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Oppose? So voted.
There's one thing also that I note here, that the tree commission is concerned that the Lions Club would like to expand the parking at the mini park and possibly take down a few trees. I see Mr. Chesney's here, from the Lions Club.
You're concerned?
Well, the tree commission. They don't feel that it's necessary to expand the parking, they never noticed any shortage of parking. If you go by during the day, there's no cars there. Okay. That's the village board's decision. It's your part, the Lions Club maintains it. There are times when it's used more, I think, I don't know if you're looking at it at this time of year, if you're going to look at it more in the summer, but that's your decision.
When we discussed this at the prior meeting, the way we had left it was that the Lions Club should request it of the village board, and then the village board will make a determination on whether they want to do it or not. That's how the process should go.
Okay.
It hasn't even been proposed to the village board yet. So far, it's an informal discussion.
Yeah, I think we did talk about it at our last meeting of the Lions Club, I think everyone was agreement that it was a good idea to add three or four spots there, so that cars could get off the road as children were exiting their vehicles, they wouldn't be getting out into the road. That was one of our discussions, and I think we also had a discussion about the fence, so I think we have to come to you with that.
Yeah, don't do anything with the fence until we decide that we're going to do something with the parking.
Yeah, so... Okay. Then you can go back to the tree commission and ask them. It's just part of my report, I had to report it. Okay.
I wondered if we couldn't add parallel parks. Well, there, you have the three vertical, and then you have kind of a shoulder, it doesn't look like it's quite wide enough for parallel parking, but we could add the parks along there, and then keep the trees the way they are.
The only thing to consider is, if you're putting parallel parking in, is if the spot is set back far enough, so you're not opening the door, any traffic, and kids are driving out into the traffic.
Right.
You know, pulling, pulling straight in off the road, at least then, when the kids get out, they're protected by the vehicle.
True.
So, you know, if the Lions Club does send us the request, then we'll address them.
Okay. That's it for me. Okay.
Planning and zoning. Ryan, you got anything?
I don't have anything, except are we advertising for the vacancy from Carol Melton on the zoning board of appeals, or...
I had thought that there was some correspondence that said they were going to discuss it internally and then get back to us.
Okay.
The zoning board. And to my knowledge, that hasn't happened.
Okay.
All right. I know Colton Johnson had sent, did you see that email Colton Johnson had sent?
No.
About some suggested names?
No, no.
No?
No.
I'll forward it to you.
Okay.
But I think what happened, he sent this email, and then they were all going to talk.
Okay.
And we did, we did put something out that we were looking for somebody, didn't we?
No, I didn't know. I wasn't talking.
Yeah, we should put some type of a notification out, something, I could get something on the website, too, that, you know, there's a vacancy. Anyone interested can submit a letter of interest and a resume. And then again, under planning and zoning, I'll talk to Bob Fennell about this issue on forty-seven West Market Street.
Yeah, I was going to go in there and root around and look at the site plan approval and stuff, too.
Yeah, and I'll see Bob on Thursday, and I'll ask him to get going on it.
Okay.
All right, police and court. Everybody have the incident report? Any questions? Actually, Colton seems to have slowed down a little bit here in the last month or so, which is a good thing. Okay, Wayne, what do you got for us?
I'm very excited to report to the board that I feel that the, our police officer will be moving into our new building probably within the next ten days to two weeks. Finally. probably within the next ten days to two weeks. Finally, um, the construction process is completed. Our building inspector has inspected the building and there were four issues that the building inspector, um, brought forward in regard to, uh, giving us a certificate of occupancy. Uh, one was a chip hazard at the front sidewalk. Uh, the other was the location of the condensing units on the south side of the building. Uh, one was the handicap, um, parking area, and the other was with the balancing of the heating and air conditioning units. Uh, I can tell you that, uh, as we, as we are here this evening, um, three and a half of those scenarios have been rectified. Um, the, as you well know, um, the sidewalk issue has been resolved. It's poured today. Um, I've inspected it and it does meet code and I anticipate that our building inspector will approve it. The, the condensing units have been moved, um, and relocated to meet code. Uh, the handicap parking area has been widened to meet code specifications and the balancing of the air conditioning and heating units has been completed, other than the, uh, we, we do have one other issue with the heating scenario which I believe will be completed within the next day or so. So I anticipate that we will have a, uh, a certificate of occupancy, um, presented to us from our building inspector probably by the end of the week. Um, there are some other issues, um, that we do need to address. Um, myself and Pete Dunn and our architect Phil Zemke have done a complete detailed inspection of the building and we did, uh, prepare a punch list, um, of a variety of issues that we felt need to be rectified. Um, not only from our general contractor, Meyer contract, but also from the electrical contractor and the HVAC contractor and the plumbing contractor. Um, I can tell you that, uh, for the most part, um, they have been rectified. However, we're not totally there yet. Um, we have some issues, but they're minor. Uh, I have been in contact with our, with our prime contractors, uh, on a daily basis to ensure that we get these things done. And I anticipate, um, that we probably will be in a move-in scenario sometime mid next week. Um, Pete, um, has, um, is aware of that scenario and he's doing what he needs to do to ensure that the phone systems and the security systems are molded together so that we have a, um, a good transition, uh, into moving forward, uh, moving into the building. The other issue, I just mentioned to you briefly that, you know, we do not at present have our emergency generator in place, um, which will not prevent us from moving into the building or prevent us from getting a certificate of occupancy. And I did make a phone call a couple of weeks ago to protect the power who is supplying that. Uh, they told me that we would probably have it by the end of this week. Um, I called again today. I did not get a returned phone call as of yet, but I will continue to pursue, uh, information in that regard. Um, but again, that's not gonna prevent us from moving in. So, um, I really feel confident that we're gonna be moving in. I would say sometime in the middle of next week, I anticipate that, uh, that the transition will take place. Which is, uh, I'm very, very happy about, so.
We all are.
Yeah.
Wayne, with nothing to do with, with, uh, getting into the building, but this morning I happened to be here and talked, talked to Mike Wolf and he mentioned to me, there's a drain out there just about here in front of the, of the building that drains into, uh, a manhole, uh, just where the curb is.
Right.
Apparently that drain is not working.
Right, and, and we're, we're on top of that. And that, that actually has been an issue that Michael Wolf has been, um, it's been his pet peeve for quite some time.
There was a piece of fabric inside underneath that thing to keep debris from falling in there during installation process.
Right.
And it was not removed, and it was removed today.
Yeah.
Okay. Because there was water sitting in there.
Right.
It was not running out.
Yeah, it looks like it's clogged, but just.
Yeah, it's not.
Ice booked it.
Yeah, yeah, it's fine. Yeah, and, you know, I had our engineers look at that and Mike Wolf had actually brought that to my attention several weeks ago. Uh, he was concerned about the fact that it was too low and things of that sort, but, uh, I had a conversation with our engineers about it.
The other thing is on the, I guess we use septic field is there?
Mm-hmm.
Seems to be a lot of water collecting there.
Yeah, um, and you know, and that's, and that's an issue that, you know, again, our, our contractors really had nothing to do with that. I mean, their, their responsibility was to create a paved parking area to the existing parking area. And that's an existing condition that, you know, we perhaps may want to address. It was there before, it's there now.
But nowadays, a septic field there.
Well, yeah, but the, but the water, uh, the water standing water here is not really in the area of our septic system at all, so.
Yeah, we didn't put a septic system in with this, we just tied into what was there.
Right, well, we put a dry well and we put, we put a major tank in there, but that, 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 that standing water is not in the area of, of the tank, so.
I mean, if you go out there and look, this is just a low spot.
Right, yeah.
Lot, you know?
It's an existing condition, so, again, that's, that's not a scenario that our contractors were responsible for. So that's, we'll deal with that as we go forward. Um, the issues that we're gonna face as we go forward, the, um, trailer is gonna be moved out. The, the construction trailer has been disconnected from an electrical standpoint today. Uh, that will be moved out in the next day or so. Um, and so that area in the, in the rear portion where the staging area was done has been cleaned up. Um, so the, so the scenarios that we're gonna deal with as we go forward are the dismantling of the, um, handicap ramp, uh, at the existing trailer, um, which I'll, I'll work with and then we'll get that dealt with. Then we have the, uh, disconnection of the electrical, um, supply to, to the temporary trailer and the water supply to the temporary trailer. And then ultimately the removal and the, uh, the ceasing of the rental of the trailer, which I will be involved in, in talk to, make sure everything happens in a good scenario. So, um, once that happens, um, I think we're in good shape. Um, I, I still have not, at this point, moved the insurance, um, from a, um, right now we're in a construction risk scenario. Until we actually move in, um, I've already set it all up with our, uh, insurance agent. So the day before we move in to the, to the, um, to the structure, I will, will switch that over. That's all in place. And I think after that, we're good.
So when is the party?
Uh, I think the board, uh, should, um, consider, um, you know, having some type of a groundbreaking or a ribbon cutting ceremony.
Plan is, plan is to do a dedication, uh, but until the CEO's issued and Pete's in there and settled in, we're not gonna schedule anything. But probably sometime in June.
Yeah.
Hopefully.
Great. Okay.
All right.
So, unless anybody has any questions, you know, I'll continue, continue in pursuit getting us in there and, uh, and, uh, removing our existing temporary scenario and, uh.
Okay. Thanks, Wayne.
Okay. Thank you.
All right, next item's dog report. We got anything, Lisa? I didn't see one. Okay, this is for March. Some calls about Mr. Arnold on Mulberry Street at number thirty-seven lets his dog bark to annoy his neighbors. Must tell the dog to go out there and bark. That was the complaint. Now a new complaint is that the dog in question is being abused. I have not seen this myself. Someone is going to have the SPCA investigate him. I haven't heard any more about it. No dogs have been picked up and no charges have been made. Committee reports, tree commission, we already did. Website, anybody got anything? Finance and controls, anything?
No.
Okay, other business, municipality, shared services. Just to bring you guys up to date, uh, I was at Dutchess County mayors and supervisors last week and of course the county is offering this shared services program. When they did the reduction in the sales tax, they took $2 million and set it aside and there are grant opportunities available to municipalities to look into sharing services. So there is an effort underway, uh, to get a bunch of municipalities, and I believe there's ten that have agreed. And I said that we were interested to look into updating and going with the latest and the greatest in the way of, uh, planning and zoning software. No charge to us. The grant would pay for it. Uh, we have then in the future would be responsible for maintenance and those types of things. But the implementation would be covered by the grant from the county. So like I said, I believe out of all the communities in Dutchess County, there's about ten I think that are gonna participate in it. Uh, same company that does our software for us now, uh, which Dodd Crane formerly owned, but he sold the business, but he's still involved with them, is doing it. Uh, it's in the process now where the grant proposal is being put together. And then there is the need for, at some point, for a resolution. Uh, I was sent a sample, a sample resolution, uh, but that's only for participation. It doesn't really spell out the details of the financial part of it. So at this point in time, I don't think we're really ready to do anything, but at some point here, we're gonna need to do it pretty soon because the grant application will have to get in. So if I need to, I'll call a special meeting and we can just come in and formalize it. All right? Uh, the other thing is, uh, the town is proposing a technology upgrade and wants to know if the village wants to partner. And the same thing, this grant application will go to the county and it'll be part of this shared services thing. And what they're proposing is updating the computer systems, uh, making it so that it's Wi-Fi capable. And it would be for both the town and the village. Uh, there may be a part on us to help out as far as making the connectivity between the two buildings. Uh, there was talk about perhaps there being a pipe that runs underneath the ground between the two buildings already. We gotta go down in the basement and see if we can find anything like that. But Elizabeth Spinsia had, was working with Jim Jeffries from Northeast Computer Services, who does the town's work and also does our work. Jim and Kevin do our work, and trying to put this whole grant proposal together. So the town has developed what they consider to be their objective of doing this, but the grant proposal isn't finalized yet. So there'll be more to come on that. So that's what I have on municipalities, municipalities shared services. Oak Street Parking is the next issue. Uh, Chris had come to our, I guess it was the night we approved the budget, correct? Yeah, had spoken with us. Uh, same problem, uh, you know, that we have over here at forty-seven West Market Street is that some of the people that are come to work there don't use the facility's parking lot, that they park on the street and leave their cars there all day long. Uh, we do have a two-hour parking restriction in the business district, but it's spelled out clearly as to where it starts and where it ends. And forty-six West Market Street doesn't have it, correct?
It has it just Oak Street. Forty-seven does have it to the corner of Oak Street, but it doesn't.
No, I'm saying forty-six, out on three oh eight.
Oh, correct.
Right, forty-six doesn't have it. And then Oak Street, from the corner of Oak Street to the end of forty-seven West Market Street's property, the mental health clinic, doesn't have it. So, uh, Chris is asking us, because he conducts a business there and has people coming and going for funerals, that the parking spots should be available and the people at forty-seven West Market Street, employees should be parking in their parking lot or utilizing the village parking lot if they can't park in that parking lot. And we need to enforce this to our parking restriction within the village. So if this, the, this board needs to determine if they want to pursue this, and if we're going to, it means holding a public hearing, you know, advertising the public hearing and having people come comment. And then we would amend the vehicle and traffic law to provide for these restrictions in those two areas. Chris, you wanna come up?
Sure.
Yep.
It sounds like it's me.
No, it's not just you.
I think it impacts all the businesses in my neighborhood.
You were just the one that brought it to us.
Yeah, I brought it to you, but it's not just because I have cars that come and go, but I think it impacts all of, you know, my neighbor businesses as well as some of the residents on Oak Street that may have guests coming and going and they have nowhere to park on the street because it is only parking on one side of the street, on Oak Street. So just, you know, and we're becoming a busy community, so people should come and go and not be able to park all day.
Right.
On, in a business district. That's my, that's my opinion and my request.
And you know, with our history in the chamber of commerce, this has been an issue for years.
Absolutely, yeah.
Continual, you know, where we talk about two-hour parking restrictions.
Mm-hmm.
So, yeah. Vicki, were you here on behalf of the chamber to talk about this at all?
Well, not so much the parking, so, um.
Did, did Mike address the board about forty seven?
Yeah.
He was here earlier?
Yeah, yeah, there was a whole, whole contingent from, uh, uh, Oak Street that was here and we're gonna.
Mine was me, sorry.
Yeah, we're gonna follow through on it. Yeah. Vicki, did you have something to talk about?
Uh, he thought it was about parking. It wasn't necessarily what he wanted to bring.
Okay, all right, let us finish up on this and then.
Yeah.
Okay. Okay, so the idea is here, if we're going to pursue this, we need to schedule a public hearing.
Do we have any other parking issues?
I was just thinking the same thing and get it all done at once.
It seems to come up a lot sometimes.
That I'm aware of, no.
Okay.
I think we've pretty much done all our, no parking here, the corner signs, and no parking here, the driveway signs. I can't think of any other areas where it's needed.
Well, if, if we think of anything in the meantime, we can bring it up, right?
What's up?
If we think of anything in the meantime.
Yes.
We can bring it up at the, the public hearing.
Could you make the hearing more general? You just gotta be real.
If you're gonna hold a public hearing to amend your code, you have to have the code, you know, the amendments published beforehand.
Okay.
You gotta know where you want to do it.
Then we've gotta do those slip pages with the publisher of the book. It's kinda expensive.
Yep. Yep.
Should we wait?
Do we wanna schedule it now or do you wanna take a little bit more time to think about it?
Fairground zoning and, I mean, that, well, that's gonna take a while.
Is this forty-seven West Market Street issue coming, uh, Oak Street issue coming up, uh, gonna be part of that, rezoning?
Part of what rezoning?
Well, when we, we talked about.
We don't have a rezoning.
I'm talking about getting, getting the, what is his name, Fennell, to, to look at what's going on in the, in the mental health facilities.
Well.
Is there gonna be some, is there gonna be a connection there with the parking?
There's gonna be, there will be some discussion about parking, but the point is, is that unless there's a restriction on the parking, anybody can park there anytime they want for as long as they want.
Right. But I'm saying that.
You know, if you don't have any regulations, you can't force anybody to do anything. You know, you can only suggest to them that your employee should be parking in your parking lot, but without a restriction of two hours. They can park it there all day long and there's not a damn thing you can do about it, you know?
Yeah, the Oak Street issue should be a planning, planning and zoning issue and not a code revision, so.
Well, see, that's where I don't agree with you because if we're gonna, if we want to limit the parking in that area, we need to have a regulation that's going to.
No, I know what I'm.
People just parked.
No, I thought he was asking about that whole use issue.
Well, the use issue will make, the use issue could turn into that it's not an allowed use.
Right.
And there may need to be a, a site plan approval or there may be the elimination of it totally. But the point being is that if we don't put a two-hour restriction there going forward, anybody can go park there for as long as they want.
No, I was just trying to.
I don't think the two are related is what I'm saying.
That's what I was saying.
Yeah.
Okay.
So you, what do you wanna do? Do you wanna try and attempt to set up a date for a public hearing now or do you wanna wait a little bit while in case we have anything else we wanna talk about?
I think we should wait and see if, really look and see if we have any other spots because.
Okay.
Every time we do this.
So what everybody needs to do is kinda keep their eyes open because they're in the village.
Yeah, yeah.
And be prepared when we have our next meeting to talk about it and get something scheduled. Okay?
So this, how far up Oak Street does this proposal?
Yeah, we go up to Michael Gee's property, right? Basically the property that the mental health clinic owns.
Till the end of that property?
Yeah. There's a fence there.
On both sides?
No. No, because there's no parking on the other side of the street.
Oh, so not on the Chesney side?
Yeah, there's no parking on the other side of the street.
Still no parking on the other side?
Yeah.
Okay.
Oak Street's only one side of the street park.
Okay.
Okay?
Okay.
All right, uh, we've got that mini park lot issue on here, but as I said, we have not received anything from, uh, the Lions Club yet. I thought we were gonna have something. All right, correspondence. Had received something from the Dax Law Firm, PC in Albany, New York. And they are representing West Point Partners LLC and there's a planned electronic transmission line that is going to be buried in the Hudson River. And they are notifying us of that because of. to be buried in the Hudson River, and they are notifying us of that because of the fact that we have a utility in the river, RER Water Intake Pipe. Hines and I had both discussed this, and Hines had provided those folks with the information on the location. All right? So what this basically says is, public service law requires that we provide a copy of the application for the CEC and PN application to the chief executive officer of each municipality in which any portion of the line would be located, and to each member of the legislature in whose district any portion of the line would be located. We expect to file the application in June two thousand thirteen. In hard copy paper format, we expect the application to consist of two large binders. We are writing now to inquire whether you would prefer to receive a hard copy or a CD of the application. What's your pleasure? It's your water intake.
CD?
CD? All right, I will call them and let them know. Dutchess County Sheriff's Office, received May ninth. Law enforcement agencies, government offices, friends and family, dear colleagues, family and friends, please join the staff of the Dutchess County Sheriff's Office on May twenty-second, two thousand thirteen, at nine thirty a.m. for a brief remembrance ceremony in tribute to sheriff's office members that gave their life in the line of duty and members that are no longer with us. There is no better way to remember and show support for each other than to come together and share a few moments of time and fellowship. Sincerely, Sheriff Adrian H. Anderson. Pete and I are going to plan on attending as long as schedule works out. Anybody else who's interested in going, let me know. Good Shepherd Church, received May tenth. Dear members of the board, once again, I ask approval for our church to have a procession down Mulberry Street to Livingston Street, turning right on Livingston Street, proceeding to Parsons Street, turning right on Parsons Street, and continuing to South Street, then back up Mulberry to the church. The procession takes place, takes no more than forty to forty-five minutes and has very little impact on traffic. With this in mind, I am asking for permission to have this procession, excuse me, on Sunday, June second, two thousand thirteen, beginning at one fifteen p.m. I thank you for considering this in a timely manner, Father Jeffrey R. Galens.
How many of these processions are there a year?
They have one.
Well, I saw one at Easter.
We have two.
Two?
Two.
All right, we have two, Palm Sunday and this one.
So we've approved, we approved one already this year?
Yeah, that one just goes from Father Brogan Center to the church.
I don't think we even get a letter on that one, do we?
I don't think so.
Yeah. I think we only approve one a year for one.
It doesn't go all the way around, it just goes from Father Brogan Center to the church.
I'll make a motion to approve. Is there a second?
Second.
Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye, opposed? So voted. May thirteenth, Rhinebeck Village Board, this is from the Rhinebeck Central School District, in particular, the Board of Education, and it's about their annual banners that they put up for graduation. Did everybody get it? Oh, okay, so you guys are aware of it. I'll make a motion to approve.
Second.
Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye, opposed? So voted.
Does the Winter Market banners come back?
Got to check on that. All right, and then we got a, this is pretty catchy, we got a letter from Get Your Guts in Gear, the ride for Crohn's and colitis. Apparently, there's a bicycle ride that's going to be held, but this doesn't impact any of the village streets. This is all in the town, right, Lisa? Have we verified that?
I already, and I gave a copy of Pete's, too, so.
Yeah, and Pete is aware of it, so we really don't need to take any action because it doesn't really impact us.
I gave it to him because it coincides with the country living.
Right. Yeah. If anybody's interested in that report from the town, I can make copies of this on the technology upgrade. All right, Vicki, what do you got for us?
Um, yes, I just.
Got to come to the microphone. State your name for the record.
Thank you, Vicki Hack, and I'm no longer the president of the chamber, but I do.
Immediate past president.
Immediate past president. Own a business in town, I also, or in the village, I also own a home in the village, and I wasn't aware that Mr. Gee had, you know, presented his concerns earlier, so Colleen wasn't able to be here, the executive director of the chamber, so we would just like to, not now, but just present some comments to the board with regard to our concerns about the change in use for the venue of the county building, and the impact that it not only has on businesses and residents, but also people coming to our community, and also if these individuals are not supervised, that they're also at risk too, for, you know, their safety is at risk also, and just to perhaps, I don't know if it should be presented to, with a letter to Mark Molinaro about it, but we'd like to participate in coming to a resolution.
All right, preliminary information, what it appears to be is, the county does not own that building.
Mm-hmm, okay.
It's owned by a private property owner, the same gentleman owns the office parked out by Wonderland.
Mm-hmm.
All right, and the county was leasing the space. We don't know what the relationship is as far as, we know, basically because Mike Gee had found out who's operating out of the building, but we don't know the relationship as them, as tenants, sub, maybe as sublease or whatever. So what we need to do is have Bob Fennell, zoning enforcement officer, contact the property owner and make a determination of what the actual arrangement is. Is it between him and these organizations that are operating? Is it between him and the county, and now the county has, and then we have to figure out where we go from there. It's clearly a change of use.
Mm-hmm.
So the zoning law applies, and if there was a change of use, it should have come for site plan approval, and the determination should have been made whether the use is appropriate for the location in the village, and none of that happened. We saw, and I say, we, I saw a change in the clients, definitely, but wasn't aware there was a change in the operation, and now this has all come to the, the front, and I mean, there's a lot of, people have expressed verbal concerns, it isn't until recently that we really got anything in writing, and that was when Mike brought in his letter yesterday. I had received another letter from a lady on Oak Street within the last week, but we had never received anything in writing. Mike did an awful lot of background work to find out what's actually going on there, and, you know, we have to now move forward on it and figure this all out.
Mm-hmm, yeah.
Okay, but, you know, we, we have concerns too.
Yeah, I, I just personally, you know, in moving through town for lunch and, and post office and all, had to intervene with a young mother with two children, with two little kids, one in a stroller, who was being harassed by one of the, not residents, but one of the attendees there for money, and it wasn't, it was, it was very unsettling for her, and so it was just a matter of her getting her kid in the stroller and asking that gentleman to leave her alone, so.
Right, and as I explained to the, the folks in the neighborhood, you know, they should not hesitate to reach out to the village board, but if they have a problem, the first thing they should do, if it's serious, is call the state, call the police, you know, and they can call the Rhinebeck Police Department, they can call the state police, I mean, we're here in the village, so we can respond quickly.
Okay.
And that should be the first, I mean, I've said it time and time again, our major, our biggest responsibility is the safety and the welfare of the community, so this is something we're going to look into and we'll take care of.
Okay, thank you.
And Jim, I'll just bring, I, I received a letter from an attorney for the landlord because there was a parking issue. Some of my clients were going in there to park, so they sent me a letter, and it does indicate that the property is leased to Dutchess County. So I'll bring a letter to that to Lisa, and she can share it with you, a copy of it, and that'll be something you can pursue.
Okay.
Okay?
Thanks, Chris.
I wasn't wrong to say my people were parking. Mr. Evans.
Thanks for your honesty. All right, any other correspondence, Lisa? I don't have any.
I got three.
She made copies for them.
Well, the Rhinebeck, Rhinebeck Exchange, I don't know if you need that, but, and then the one from Bren.
All right, well, this isn't anything that takes any action on our part.
Okay.
And this, this, I'm looking into it. Rich and I were down there tonight talking about it.
Okay, then that's it?
What we got?
No, that's, that's, that's already done.
Yeah.
Okay, so about this.
That one's already done.
We answered them, we're not interested in any of them.
Listen, yeah, we're not interested in them.
And then there's if somebody wants a hundred bucks.
That one's done, too.
It's done?
Listen, talked to me about it today.
We don't make donations. Taxpayers get to make donations with their money, we don't get to make them with the taxpayer's money. Anything else?
We have the, the insurance, the Nymer, and then the workman's comp stuff. Is Heath looking into the potential insurance saving number?
Yeah.
Thanks a lot.
That's, oh, that's something I should report to you guys, Dutchess County Mayors and Supervisors last week. County is offering to share in their workman's comp plan. They're self-insured, managed by a third party, hundred-year-old company, very good Beacon, City of Beacon signed on and took, took a fifty-seven percent reduction in their workman's comp. Aminia signed on, took a seventy-two percent reduction in their workman's comp. So I spoke with Rebecca White, who is heading the program up for the county, and she told me what we need to provide them in order for them to look into this, and Heath's going to follow up with her. So that was another part of the meeting last week.
There's also something going on with the, with the town, they're, they're changing their insurance company, and I think I sent you something.
Yeah, the Nymer stuff, yeah. Okay, Heath met with them.
What kind of insurance is Nymer here?
Liability.
Liability.
Yeah, there are, he has other options for comp, but probably the county program would be.
It's going to be better, yeah, good, thanks.
So it's all stuff we can work on for the next few months. Be prepared for January, which is right around the corner when we start our budget process.
Enjoy the summer first.
All right, that's it?
Are there adjustments?
Any water insurance adjustments, Hans?
I have nothing to see.
Okay. Vouchers are ready to be approved. We need an executive session for personnel matters.
I make a motion to go to executive session?
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye, opposed? So voted.
Can we afford it?
Okay, I need a motion to resume regular session?